Good afternoon. I would like to welcome everyone to the May 12, 2022 work session of the Henrico County School Board. As a reminder, this meeting is being live streamed on the Henrico Schools page. At this time, I would like to make a note of Mrs. Cancela's physical absence from today's work session. She previously notified myself, the Chair, as she was requested to participate electronically from a remote location due to a personal matter. Our school board policy, P2-04-006, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations, requires a majority vote of the board members present at the primary or central meeting location to allow a board member to participate in a meeting from a remote location. In accordance with this policy, do I hear a motion?
I move that the school board approve Mrs. Cancela's participation in today's work session electronically.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Atkins. Vote by roll call. Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Mrs. Cancela's request has been approved. This meeting is being live streamed on the HTTPS website, and we will begin with a roll call. When I call your name, please verbally indicate your presence. Reverend Cooper?
Present.
Mrs. Cancela?
Present, albeit virtually.
Thank you. Mrs. Ogborne?
I'm here.
Ms. Atkins?
Present.
Thank you. Please let the record record that a quorum of the board is physically present and Ms. Cancela is participating electronically. Ms. Cancela, I ask you to verbally note if you need to leave the meeting and subsequently verbally note when you return. The first, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Motion made by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ogborne. Roll call, vote. Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Cancela?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. The agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is the closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move that the school board go into closed session for the discussion of matters under item A1 of section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended pertaining to the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and release of contract for specific school board employees, including the discussion of an employee grievance appeal for employee case number 21-22-E2.
Moved by Ms. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. Roll call, vote. Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Cancela?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. We are now in closed session. Welcome back. Is there a motion to certify closed session?
I move that the school board certify by recorded vote that, to the best of each school board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Go ahead. Second?
Seconded by Ms. Atkins. Roll call, vote. Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Cancela?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it, and the closed session has been certified. Dr. Cashwell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board. For the first item, I am recommending that the school board uphold the hearing officer's recommendation in employee grievance case number 21-22-E2.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Is there a motion?
I move that the school board uphold the hearing officer's recommendation in employee grievance case number 21-22-E2.
Moved by Ms. Ogborne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Atkins. Roll call, vote. Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Cancela?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. The employee grievance recommendation is upheld.
Thank you. The next item, I have two policies that we'll be bringing forth for your consideration to accept the revisions to the policies and also to waive the 30-day review period for those policies. Dr. Tighgan's here to answer questions you may have about those revisions. The first one is related to policy P6-03-004, non-residents. And again, this policy revision brings the policy into line with practice we want to put in place related to expanding the option for non-resident full-time and permanent part-time Henrico County Public Schools employees to request tuition variance for their K through 12 children to attend a Henrico school. Any questions about that policy? Comments?
Dr. Cashwell, would it be okay with you in terms of, we will take action on them separately, but for discussion, since they're interwoven?
Sure.
Can we do discussion and questions on both those items together?
Sure, we can discuss both, and then we'll, I'll read them again for approval specific to each policy. So, related to that policy, you'll see also that we've brought forth for your consideration revisions to policy P6-03-011, school assignment variance procedures. And again, would be seeking your approval and waiver of that 30-day review period to get this in place to best serve our employees and potentially their desire to participate in this. So, Dr. Tighgan, do you have any info you want to share? And then would offer if there are any comments from board members? I know two board members sit on the policy committee and have worked hard as part of the revision process here and would just take any questions or comments you might have.
Yes. First and foremost, I think staff as well as the board may have questions related to the fact that the window for our K5 students has already passed, but that obviously with bringing these policies forward again today, we would open it up for K through 12 from now through June 1st if these are approved and this afternoon. Also, you'll see that we took information, really what we did was try to take information we'd put before in the variance policy and really put it all in the non-resident policy so that it provides more cohesiveness within the policy manual. And so, hopefully that makes things a little cleaner and a little easier for our staff as well as our families.
Thank you, Dr. Tighgan. I know you on the policy committee as well as Ms. Ogborne and Ms. Cancela have been working really for months on this revisions and it coming. And so, I'm excited to see it come out of committee and officially before the board. So, any questions or comments, Ms. Atkins? Ms. Ogborne?
I'll just point out one thing. On the 03-011, the thing to really note is the changes for juniors and seniors. And if you look at the policy carefully, we're allowing students who have completed the 10th grade at their current school and move, apply for a variance to their 11th and 12th years. Did I say that wrong?
Well, that's a part of the regulations.
Right, of the regulation.
Right. The policy is not impacted by that, but the regulations do impact 11th and 12th graders.
But, I mean, the way I look at this, and I think one reason why we spent so much time on it, is it's such a help for our teachers and for our families and our students to give them a little more flexibility, and especially for our teachers who live in other counties. So, I'm hoping that the teachers will, you know, if they are so inclined, take advantage of it, but I just think it makes it easier K through 12 as opposed, you know, we have been doing K through 5 for our teachers who live in other counties. So, it's a win for our teachers, I think.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. Reverend Cooper, any comments? Ms. Cancela, any comments on either of these policies?
I just support what Ms. Ogborne just said, as well as to highlight it's on an annual basis, the application for variance, whether you're non-resident or resident. And just, this is in response actually to employee requests in an effort to recruit, retain, and reward. And just to note, subject to capacity at the schools. That was a big one for, that I felt that the board be represented in when we looked at this policy, that subject to capacity at the school. Correct, Dr. Tighgan?
Yes, ma'am. And if capacity is not at a particular school where one of our employees may work, then we will work to identify a nearby school. And we also have staff that aren't assigned to schools, and of course, we'll work with them. But again, it's not like there's a choice of schools will help based on where the home is located and/or where the work site is, and that there is capacity within the school, whether it's elementary, middle, or high. But we'll work individually as a central office team with staff on the placement.
Okay. That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cancela. I am really excited to see this come out of committee. I know I'm at one of my schools, and particularly quite a few of the staff has reached out to me about the expansion of our variance, staff variance policy to include secondary. And so, I really appreciate their advocacy in explaining why it's so important to some of our staff members and then also to the policy committee and the board members for working on this truly for months and a lot of repetition. I think it's so important, what you mentioned, that we're not just opening the secondary window, but we're reopening the whole K-12 window. As, a lot of families have students that kind of straddle elementary and secondary, or they have elementary students that are quickly approaching secondary, and this could impact, they may have said, "Well, I'll pass," but now with the secondary, it changes. And so, we really are trying to do this with, offer this to our staff with fidelity, and I think that's what it shows.
Yes, ma'am.
And then additionally, later in the meeting, we're going to be looking at the fee schedule and codifying for the next year that it'll be tuition-free. And I think that's also important. I actually just got some emails about that this morning, so I'll be excited as we get through the meeting to be able to provide an update there. So, thank you. Anything else?
Yeah.
All right. So, hearing that, we need to look at each of the policies individually. And so, the superintendent has requested that we approve the policy as well as waive the 30-day. So, we will start with policy P6-03-004. Is there a motion?
I move that the school board waive the 30-day review period and approve policy P6-03-004 as presented.
Motion made by Ms. Ogborne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. Roll call, vote. Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Cancela?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. The 30-day review period is waived and the policy is approved. Additionally, we need to separately take action on the other policy, which is P6-03-011. Is there a motion?
I move that the school board waive the 30-day review period and approve policy P6-03-011 as presented.
Thank you. Ms. Atkins, motion made by Ms. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ogborne. Roll call, vote. Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Cancela?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. The 30-day review period is waived and the policy is approved.
Thank you. For the next item, I am seeking or asking that the board, sorry, accept, we find the right verb there, for the Dick's Sporting Goods Foundation grant award of $5,000 to benefit Rolf Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Is there a motion?
I move that the school board accept the grant award as recommended.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Motion made by Ms. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. Roll call, vote. Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Cancela?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. The grant is accepted.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending that the school board accept the Virginia Department of Education Career and Technical Education Competitive Innovative Program Equipment for High Demand and Fast Growth Industry Sectors Grant. That might be the longest grant title yet. Award in the amount of $37,500 to the Advanced Career Education Center at Hermitage High School.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell. Is there a motion?
I move that the school board accept the grant award as recommended.
Thank you, Ms. Cancela. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ogborne. Roll call, vote. Reverend Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Cancela?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it. The grant has been accepted.
Thank you. For the next item, we were hoping to once again formally recognize our REB Leadership Award winner, Tanya Holmes, Principal of Harvey Elementary School, but I understand she was once again unable to be here, and we regret that we will look for the, we were able to surprise her, of course, at her school with her family and in front of her staff, but look forward to recognizing her formally in front of the board at a future date. So, for the next item, I have an update related to special education priorities, and I know we got to hear at a last meeting, some updates related to the special education grant proposal that went forward, and now, as promised, will bring you, Dr. Smith and Mrs. Young are going to come forward to bring you an update on special education programming. Dr. Smith?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon and present you a special education update. As we have worked over the last year to identify our priorities within the Exceptional Education Department, we are pleased to report that all of our action items for our priorities tie directly back to each of the six strategic goals. In the next few slides, you will hear information regarding literacy, social-emotional behavioral supports, recruitment and retention efforts, community partnerships, as well as securing a new building and expanding programming for Virginia Randolph Education Center. This school year has been an exciting time in our department. As Katie and I have planned our goals for the 2021-22 school year, we focused on the following four key areas: professional learning, specialized reading instruction, behavior learning intervention and support services, our BLIS program, and Virginia Randolph Education Center. During the pandemic, the Department of Exceptional Education did not lose sight of the importance of providing teachers, administrators, and instructional assistance with opportunities for professional growth and learning. Beginning July 1st, our department launched our standard operating procedure dashboard, which is a one-stop shop for teachers and administrators in Henrico to have clear processes and procedures for ensuring compliance with special education regulations and laws. There are over 15 topics of interest and more than 40 guidance documents in our SOP site. We've been pleased to continue monthly meetings with exceptional education administrators to provide information and training on special education compliance and best practices. Additionally, our department has expanded our library of asynchronous resources and Schoology to provide on-demand learning opportunities for staff. Finally, we've partnered with the Department of Student Support and Wellness to make professional learning available on trauma-informed practices when working with students with disabilities who may have experienced trauma. In November, our department welcomed Dr. Marilyn Friend for a virtual professional learning session with teachers and administrators. Dr. Friend is a nationally recognized expert in the field of co-teaching. Co-teaching is a collaborative approach to instruction in which two teachers, typically a general education and a special education teacher, work together to plan and implement instruction for a class that includes general ed and special education students. More than 80% of our current students with disabilities in Henrico are taught using this instructional model. Additionally, our department has been in lockstep with the Departments of Teaching, Learning, and Innovation and School Quality with providing a special education lens and support for the Henrico County instructional model. Every Monday, members of our team spend the day developing resources and supports to ensure curriculum alignment and that materials are accessible for all learners. Onboarding new teachers with information and resources is key in our retention efforts and provides teachers with opportunities to learn about instructional and compliance best practices. For the last two years, the Special Education New Teacher Track has been virtual. This year, we're excited to return to an in-person professional learning model for New Teacher Week, and we are looking forward to welcoming new special educators to Henrico. Our department is also working with the Department of Professional Learning and Leadership to develop micro-credentials for HTTPS educators, board-certified behavior analysts, as well as developing a multisensory reading micro-credential are on our list of priorities. Our department is grateful to the work of the Professional Learning and Leadership Team, in addition to the school board, for investing in the specialization of teachers in Henrico County. Our second priority is continuing high-quality specialized reading instruction for students with disabilities. The Henrico-Orton-Gillingham Strategies Reading Training is 21 hours of training over the course of three days and is led by our dyslexia advisor, Rebecca Hodel. Topics include Orton-Gillingham Principles, phonological awareness and phonics, teaching high-frequency words, lesson planning and assessment. Two of the Exceptional Education School Quality coaches and six of the Exceptional Education coordinators have also been trained in multisensory reading methodology. These staff are available to support teacher implementation through coaching, observation, and feedback. As a result of the rigorous professional development program led by our dyslexia advisor, each of our schools, including HBA, has at least one special education teacher trained in Orton-Gillingham-based reading strategies. Every summer, our dyslexia advisor has tracked the movement of teachers between schools, as well as any teachers leaving Henrico, to ensure that every school is able to send someone to our three-day training in order to maintain that high-quality reading instruction for our students. Our dyslexia advisor has also collaborated with the Department of Student Support and Wellness to provide professional development to school psychologists on instructional strategies that might inform their evaluation methods. We are excited to open the Middle School Zone Reading Program at Hungry Creek this fall. We're pleased to announce that a teacher has been selected to lead this work. The role of the teacher will be to provide individualized and small-group reading instruction while pushing into the general education courses to support students and general education teachers with implementing research-based methodologies for students with significant literacy deficits. Additionally, our dyslexia advisor has worked with special education specialists to review student data, identify potential students who may require this program, and we've begun holding IEP meetings and speaking with families. It's our goal, the program will support 15 6th grade students beginning in August. One of the benefits of our time in a predominantly virtual setting was providing targeted small-group reading instruction. During our summer extended school year services for the past two years, virtual reading teachers have been able to work with students in small groups across a variety of schools and grade level who are working on similar reading skills. We are very grateful to the school board for the two new virtual reading teacher positions for the 22-23 school year. We're in the process of hiring one elementary and one secondary virtual reading teacher to continue the work from the summer into a full-year model. New for the upcoming school year, we're in the process of identifying three teachers to participate in comprehensive Orton-Gillingham certification through the Institute of the Multisensory Reading Instruction. After completing 30 hours of coursework on phonological awareness, phonics, and the instructional methods to teach fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension, teachers would then complete a practicum. During the practicum, teachers would be required to develop lesson plans and be observed by a coach while implementing instructional methods. Coaches will provide feedback about the effective implementation of direct, explicit, multisensory reading instruction principles in the lesson. Teachers who demonstrate the ability to effectively implement Orton-Gillingham strategies and whose students make significant growth during the school year will be able to attain the certification. Lastly, we've invited Rebecca Hodel, our dyslexia advisor, to join us today in the audience. Rebecca, if you would stand to be recognized for the amazing work and dedication to literacy instruction for our students with disabilities. Back on. Our third priority is enhancing our social-emotional supports through our BLIS programs. The Exceptional Education Department is proud of the success of our BLIS programs and the work of the school staff that have provided a positive impact for students and families. The Metropolitan Educational Research Consortium Program Evaluation, completed in June 2021, which was outlined in the strategic plan, indicated that HTTPS exceptional education staff is meeting programmatic goals established at the onset of the BLIS program. Initial goals were to reduce disciplinary incidents, increase the amount of time that students spend in school and in their classrooms, serve students in their least restrictive setting, and then improve parent and student perceptions of school. The Merck Evaluation identified recommendations that our department has addressed this year. Those recommendations include establishing defined processes for reporting data and creating additional professional learning opportunities for the critical response teachers. Next year, staff will expand the program to include additional program evaluation recommendations, which include adding a BLIS program coordinator and a BLIS specialist, which will be grant-funded. Staff will also expand the program by adding a second BLIS classroom at Verona High School. This new addition brings our total to 18 BLIS classrooms in 16 of our schools. Currently, our Secondary Zone specialists are also reviewing options to expand our curriculum offerings at the secondary level. We are looking to adopt another curriculum option to support the ever-changing needs of our students and modify the program to support needs we've seen increase as a result of the pandemic. The department remains committed to revision and revitalizing the programming that's provided through our public separate program of VREC. Current considerations are in place regarding the facility, staffing, and expanded programming with a goal to have these components roll out with the new building. Some new programming considerations include expanding VREC to become a pre-K through 12 school, supporting students with emotional disabilities as well as autism. We plan to continue our Employment Skills Academy for students with disabilities who are 18 years and older. These students are completing vocational coursework within a special education small classroom environment and participating in A-Center classes on the campus of Virginia Randolph.
Dr. Smith, if I might have you pause for just a second.
Sure.
And thank you for continuing on with the presentation. I know that the PowerPoint presentation is not showing, for at least those in the audience, maybe on the live stream. I know that board members do have the full PowerPoint presentation as it was made available in Board Doc, so I appreciate you continuing, but we'll just pause for a moment and see if we can change things for those here in our audience and...
There you go.
Awesome.
All right, great. And then we'll move on from there, so...
Would you like for me to start over?
I think you can pick up right where you left off.
Okay.
The piece of, yep.
For the A-Center.
Yep.
Staff members have also toured local private day schools to better understand the programmatic offerings of our private day partners to enhance our offerings with the expansion of the campus of Virginia Randolph. The Exceptional Education Team is working with the Department of Community and Family Engagement to develop a list of potential community partnerships that will support family resources for VREC students. Some of these partnerships could include community BCBA partnerships, Henricumetal Health, VCUT-TAC, among others. I have been able to participate in the request for proposal process, including interviewing and selecting an architectural firm. Additionally, a couple weeks ago, I attended a meeting with Mosley Architects and other school leaders to discuss space utilization and program needs to assist in the design and other school leaders to discuss space utilization and program needs to assist in the design space. Thank you for your time and attention this afternoon. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this presentation or our identified priorities.
Thank you so much, Dr. Smith and Mrs. Young. Since we ended with VREC, I'm going to carry that enthusiasm right over and start with Reverend Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Dr. Smith and Ms. Young can't say thank you enough for all of the hard work that you all do on behalf of our students, so thank you so much. On Slides four and five, professional learning, under the career ladder micro-credentialing, could you share a bit more about the opportunities that we provide for our staff looking to improve their skill sets and boost their careers in the field of special ed?
Absolutely. So regarding the career ladder, right now, the two specializations that we're currently developing are BCBA licenses or certifications for teachers, as well as looking at working with Rebecca and doing a micro-credentialing reading specialization. So those are the two current course tracks that we're in the process of developing and collaborating in order to make those specializations available for our teachers. And there will be more to come, but those are the two focused right now, one for behavior and one for reading.
I think it's important that lets them know that we are definitely intentional about allowing them to make progress. Secondly, for our full-time instructional assistants, could you share what pathways and sports we provide for helping them to move from being an IA to a certified special ed teacher?
So I really give a tremendous amount of kudos and appreciation to our Department of Human Resources. They've really done an outstanding job this year of really targeting our instructional assistants to make them aware of the various pathways to becoming a special education teacher. So one of the first things is specifically targeting RIAs to let them know if they have a bachelor's degree and they take the prerequisite course, which involves legal compliance for special ed as well as the characteristics of students with disabilities, then they may be able to become provisionally licensed special education teachers. So that's kind of the first thing, is letting them know that there are routes in order to get a provisional license. Henrico has also worked with or are in the process of trying to identify two local universities to provide low-cost, no-cost options for our RIAs to continue completing the coursework once they've obtained provisional licensure, and we're hoping that that will start this fall. And lastly, for our instructional assistants, we have also absorbed the cost of the parapro examination that IAs have to take in order to be a full-time IA so that that isn't a financial burden for them and another reason that they would want to work in Henrico County.
I mean, that's awesome. Do we have, do we know percentage of our IAs who have taken advantage of all those opportunities in order for them to become a certified special education teacher?
I do not know. I'm happy to get back to you about that, but I will tell you, I even have a secretary in my office right now who's a former instructional assistant who came to work with us on our private day team in central office, who's interviewing now to be a special ed teacher because she loves it. So, you know, come one, come all to Henrico County.
That's a great plug. I loved it. I know Ms. Bowden loved it too. I see her smiling. Could you, could you share more real quick about the specialization tract that's provided during New Teacher Week?
Sure. So we're really excited about this, and this came about two years ago. And of course, you know, it was going to be implemented right when we were kind of in that COVID world. But what we do is, rather than having special education teachers attend the general education sessions, we really have created their own individualized track where for five days, they're learning from members of our team about the different fields of special education and the specialization. So like I told you, to get a provisional license, they're really just taking one course, maybe two. So there is a lot that they're coming to us needing to know. So they're taking classes on the legalities, the timelines, the compliance. We're going through behavior strategies, talking about progress reports, you know, teaching them about how to call home, write IEPs, going into instruction, specially design instruction, what that looks like, whether they're in a collab class or a resource class or integrated services. They get FaceTime with their zone specialists and coordinators and other teachers in their zone to start developing that new teacher cohort so that they know who their immediate supports are in central office to help them. I could go on and on, but really it's five days of intensive professional development so that they feel like they're ready to start on that first day of school.
I mean, just based upon what you stated, I know that's not all of it. That's just probably a snippet of it.
That's probably two and a half days.
So it's important because I think in the general, the general event, they would not get that, you know. And so that's why it's important for me to hear it, so thank you so much. Let's move to Slides six and seven.
Okay.
If you don't mind. Can you, can you just quickly describe the type of students who would benefit from the Orton-Gillingham approach? I was reading that this type of approach is highly effective for teaching students with dyslexia, but could you also share what others, other type of needs this specialized reading approach would help address?
Absolutely. So we don't specifically identify students for dyslexia in Henrico. Students can get reading services under a multitude of disability labels. So typically, if a student has more of a traditional dyslexia profile, they're going to be a student who may be identified with a specific learning disability in reading. But one of the things we've really worked on with Rebecca's support and help is making an appropriate instructional match for our students. So we have more than just OG programs, but what we've really spent time this year doing is tracking progress by disability type. So it's students who have that traditional SLD profile, students who have maybe attention deficit disorder, OHI, students who have autism. And what we're trying to do is to make sure that the profile that the student has or the needs that they have, we have the appropriate instructional match for the student. Or if we're seeing a student's not making progress, we're able to, with the data that we're collecting and seeing where the disability groups are, we're able to make a switch to a different program that may better suit their needs to ensure that progress is being made.
Well, that's kind of a great segue to my next question because on Slide six, it states that the OG trained teacher in each school, and so breaking down the data, since this approach is highly effective for teaching students with dyslexia, does the district have a breakdown of the number of students at each school who have been identified as having dyslexia?
So we wouldn't necessarily have that information because not, because again, it's not a disability, identified disability under IDEA, but we would certainly have the number of students by district, by school, who are receiving direct reading services.
Well, I guess it's good to know that we do not, you know, specifically identify, so thanks for that. And then last question on that is, what are the training requirements to become an OG classroom educator and any type of continued ed requirements our teachers must complete in order to maintain the status?
So for the certification, it's the 30 hours of intensive plus the practicum and a final exam with lesson plan review from an OG certified trainer already with explicit feedback on how well your instructional methods are meeting the direct needs of your students. So, and that's where we're looking to do the three, the three teachers in Henrico because it pretty much will take an entire year for them to reach that certification. And for then, for the training that's led by Ms. Hodel, that's a three full-day training that teachers are attending for 21 hours in order to be certified or HCPS certified, we'll call it, in Henrico to teach direct reading instruction.
Thank you so much. Thank you again for those questions being answered, Madam Chair. I'm done.
I'm surprised you didn't give some enthusiasm about VREC.
Oh, yeah. You know, that's, that's understatement. I just, I was just so caught up in just focusing on the specialized reading training and what it does. But thank you for attending and talk about specialization. I know every one of my peers, we are so excited about the opportunity to build a world-class facility that's commensurate to the needs of our students, staff and families. And so the fact that it is in the Fairfield District, the fact that it is named after a trailblazing woman who means so much still to our community, I feel that this new facility will emphasize our, our commitment to ensuring that no matter where a child is, no matter what a child needs, that we're willing and able to meet those needs. So I'm excited and I can't wait to see Ms. Moore and her team, those schematic designs. I think that day I'll wear a Virginia Randolph t-shirt or something, you know, when we do it. So thank you again, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Reverend Cooper. Ms. Uggren?
You asked so many of my questions, but, and I thank you for that. I am so excited about this zone reading program. So if you could tell me, we're doing this at Hungry Creek, so what's next after this trial at Hungry Creek?
So the goal would be that we would, for the next three years, have a new 6th grade class every year. So this being the first year, we'll have the 15 6th graders who will become 7th graders next year if they still require the program. And we would bring in a new cohort of 6th grade students until we're able to grow the program. We'll continue to monitor their needs if the program, if we have more need than the program can assist with, then we'll certainly look with and work with space utilization to identify a second site. But we're really hopeful that with doing some intense needs, that students are going to be ready to return back to their comprehensive schools with all of the tools they need to be successful for the 9th grade.
That's just awesome. I mean, all of what you said is just yet another example of supporting teachers and students, and that's what's so exciting about all of this. The only other thing I had was you said the new programs at VREC, you're hoping to get pre-K through 12 in there.
Yes, ma'am.
So pre-K at VREC, that would be very new. One class or multiple?
So we're going to see what the need is. So what we find right now is we have a lot of parents who are a little bit apprehensive, specifically when they have preschoolers who have autism, of coming to us for preschool programming. And we really see them immediately seek some of those specialized private day schools like Faison. And so what we want to do is to be able to have a program that is more intensive to support students with autism who may have behavioral challenges so that we're able to get them into our public separate school right away to provide those necessary supports. And parents don't feel like that the current program offerings may not meet their child where they are in that preschool program.
That's just awesome. But thank you. I, I think between Reverend Cooper and I, we've covered all my questions, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Uggren. Ms. Atkins?
So good afternoon to both of you. It's so wonderful to be in this moment because, Dr. Smith, you came, I want to say, sometime around July last year in our pandemic, and to be here almost a year later to share these positive outcomes, it's really wonderful. So I just wanted to start with that. And Ms. Young, I know you will be filling in shortly, so very excited about the transition that you will be encountering. And so we're going to start it with a positive note in that way. Also, in the presentation, I liked the list of areas that you'll be focusing on and very pleased around professional development. I know that's something that CAC had recommended in their annual report, I think, back in 2019. So it's wonderful to see this as a continued area of focus, not only because we have folks in the community, a part of CAC, that say we need this, but we have teachers as well. And so I think it's a definite win-win to keep professional development on the radar and that it's listed and memorialized as one of your goals as a continuum. The other space is around Bliss and PBIS. I know we have both of those teams in our schools. Can you please share, first of all, what they do and the similarities and/or differences between the two teams?
Sure. So PBIS is kind of a tier-one intervention that every student can access, whether general ed or special ed in a school. And it's approached to teaching and targeting positive behaviors and rewarding positive behaviors in school. The Bliss program is a separate specialized special education program. So students still go to Gen Ed classes, except for one of our elementary schools does have a self-contained approach. But those students really, while they participate in the school-based PBIS model, those are students who may have specific behavior goals or behavior intervention plans with targeted individualized behavior supports. And those plans that we're working on through direct explicit behavior instruction in order to get to some proactive or appropriate behaviors for those students. So Bliss is just another layer of support and so that we can maintain students in their least restrictive setting who may have more significant behavioral needs than just a tier-one approach to PBIS.
Thank you for that. And just for clarity, I know we're using acronyms, but I'll say the full for both for anyone who is listening. So for Bliss, Behavioral Learning Intervention Support Services, which is one of the goals listed in your slide.
Yes.
And the other one is Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. Make sure I said that right. And so because we have both of these, I can share, I know there's been some feedback in just understanding the differences between the two. Both understanding that they're providing us services, but how are they providing those services? What are their responsibilities specifically in developing the behavioral plans? And so in developing the behavioral plans, do both teams develop those or just one team?
So the behavior intervention plans, it's through an IEP team. So parents provide consent for us to conduct what's called a functional behavior assessment. I'll stop using my ABC acronyms, but a functional behavior assessment. And what we do is we really look as a team and say, what are the maybe three behaviors we want to specifically target for this student? Like, what are we seeing that's kind of disrupting their learning or the learning of others? And so the team will come up with kind of those three specific behaviors that they want to target. And then they take what's called ABC data, that's what it's called, but it's antecedent behavior and consequence. And so they, once they see the behavior, like during a classroom observation, they say, what immediately happened before it? So we can start identifying the triggers so that we can anticipate if this happens to a student, this might be the behavior that we see. And then we try to figure out the function of the behavior. So is it avoidance? Is it attention-seeking? And so what would be the response? So if we, if a student really struggles with reading per se, and they're called on to read aloud, and then they exhibit a behavior, and then the teacher says to them, okay, you don't have to read anymore, then we've kind of negatively reinforced that every time you're asked to read aloud, if you exhibit an inappropriate behavior, we'll stop that demand. So what we look to do is, once we've identified that it's an avoidance behavior, how can we teach replacement skills to that student and probably provide targeted reading instruction if they're not already seeing it, that will lessen the chance that we're going to see that behavior over time? And that's really what the behavior intervention plan then outlines.
Fantastic. Thank you for that. I think if there was some way to capture that, to be able to explain it to families, that might be something for you and your teams to consider, especially being aligned with that IEP process and the responses from the behavior. So the outcome of that behavior and how it's going to be handled, I think is something that would help many families better understand the process.
Absolutely.
Right? We see the outcome, but we may not always understand what that process is. And I think that the school division is doing a great job of decreasing arrests and sending our kids to juvenile justice departments. However, it still is a concern. And when I saw your focus on Bliss, and I'm going to say slash PBIS, I think that I would like to learn more on how these teams can help in that space, right? We know we have higher disciplinary numbers in our areas of disabilities and also students of color with disabilities. And it'll be nice to have a better understanding on that process that both of these teams use. How does that impact sort of that disciplinary high proportionate rates that we see? So of course, not in this setting, but I would like to be a part of a conversation to better understand that and then capture it so that families can be a part of that conversation as well. And then lastly, I also wanted to share a few thoughts as I was going through just some past reports and conversations with families. I wanted to just share some of the feedback that I've received as far as the question was, if I could say something on your behalf, what would it be? There was a very long list, so I just captured the top. And so families would like more information on navigating roadblocks within unique situations as well as the overall special education process, transition planning, dyslexia, and resources to keep their children engaged, particularly when we're thinking about our virtual learners within the special education space. How do families continue to keep their kids engaged through the screen? It's already something of a conversation piece without the disability. But particularly on this topic, students with disabilities, how can we help our families keep those kids engaged and wanting to learn and wanting to read? And so I wanted to share that feedback with you. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Consella? Ms. Consella, I believe you might be muted. Hold on, we had a computer reboot on Arkan, so let's make sure we're all hooked up. And the joys of virtual learning, virtual meetings. All right, try again. All right, hold on. Ms. Atkins, if you, or sorry, Ms. Consella, if you don't mind, I know it's traditional for the chair to go last, but I'll go ahead and go with my questions while we figure out our team's connection. All right, can you speak again, Ms. Consella? Nope. Hold on.
Right now. Yeah.
Try again, Ms. Consella.
Okay.
Yeah, there you are. All right, go ahead.
Okay, well, I appreciate this update, of course. Thank you, Dr. Smith and Ms. Young. As I listen, I try to hear things where we've spent money from our budget, either prior budget or upcoming budget. And I just heard two reading teachers. I'm excited about that. I'm seeing career.
I'm seeing career ladder, right? The three-point million toward the career ladder. And then if someone could explain to me where our 40, I know our budget has 40 special education instructional assistants going from temporary to full-time. Can you explain that to me? How that is going to positively impact our special education in Henrico schools?
Absolutely. So one of the biggest things we've noticed this year, and we've really charted since September, is looking at our temporary instructional assistant vacancies and recognizing that our schools have had a difficulty attracting and retaining some of those positions, particularly our secondary schools. And so what our team has done is we've taken those 40 positions, and as I stand here, we've allocated 32 where we've been able to make reductions in schools that have had unfilled temporary assignments for the entire year and provide them with a full-time staff member for next year. And so we've just very recently, as of yesterday, gotten the numbers to post and start hiring all of those positions. But those positions directly work with students, either in our integrated services programs, or some of them serve in a targeted assistance, directly working with students in the gen ed setting. And so that number is going to make a tremendous impact to our schools in order to also make sure that our teachers feel empowered and successful in the classroom by having those instructional assistants from bell to bell in order to support the various student needs that we see.
Thank you. Thank you for highlighting that. I think that's the one thing that I've heard this year when I hear feedback from our teachers, is that support was crucial, both for our teachers and for our students. So thank you for that information. That's all I, that's all I had, Chair Shay.
Thank you so much, Ms. Consella. So a few questions from me. The one-stop shop that you talked about, is that available to general education staff or just special education staff?
It is available to all staff, general education teachers, special education teachers, related service providers, and administrators.
That's, I think that's so wonderful. As a general education teacher, I know sometimes I had specific questions. And while I would, you know, seek out the caseworker and try to talk about things, having a one-stop shop to be able to, you know, kind of self-access and self-educate to come to the caseworker more educated, I think that's a game changer, particularly for a lot of our secondary general education teachers who see different types of IEPs from year to year. And so I applaud you all for making it easy to access everything in one place. I think the easier it can be, the more likely it is to be utilized like we want it to.
Thank you.
Let's see. So I'm really excited about all of our reading initiatives, both for our general education students and our special education students. I know that's been a really big focus of Dr. Cashwell since she came here, infusing the science of reading and our new literacy plan, and then as well as this OG piece, which I think is so important. And I'll just, again, shout out Ms. Odell. I remember maybe two years ago, at one of the budget hearings, the sole comment was on the impact of Ms. Odell's position and her department as it was really ramping up and the positive impact on our students. And so I'm glad to see that those services are expanding and continuing. So we, it's, from what I've read, it's estimated about 15% to 20% of students nationwide are, have dyslexia. And so statistically, that impacts all of our classrooms. So a couple questions specifically around dyslexia. First, can you articulate again, you spoke with Reverend Cooper a little bit about it, about, you mentioned that we do not identify dyslexia specifically, but we do identify, was it reading disabilities?
So yes. So one of the IDA categories is not dyslexia its own, like as a standalone category. It's actually specific learning disability in the area of reading. But we also know that there are other disabilities who struggle with reading outside of just students who are identified or who may have the medical diagnosis of dyslexia.
So the, is, can you explain to us the reason why we don't identify dyslexia? Is it because it's not an ID?
Yes, ma'am. So when we, when we identify a student to be eligible for special education services, we use the IDEA criteria and the IDEA disability categories in order to do that.
That's really helpful for me. I didn't, I didn't realize that that was kind of the, I didn't realize all of those pieces. And so as parents reach out and say, you know, my child has dyslexia, but the school isn't recognizing it as dyslexia, that helps me understand the bigger picture and how we are identifying things and are categorizing things.
And the same would be true for like dyscalculia. So that would be a student who has a math disability or dysgraphia, a student who has a reading disability, I mean, a writing disability.
Thank you so much for that clarification. So I know maybe two years ago, we were planning to implement the RAND screener, and then we all got COVIDed with all the last two years. So where are we in that with the RAND screener?
We are not, I might have Rebecca come up, but we're not using the grand screener at the moment, but she can probably give you a little bit more information than I can.
Hello. So we, since we came back from COVID, have not reinstituted providing the RAND screener that we were using in kindergarten, pre-COVID. And we were using it actually kindergarten and first grade at some of our schools. PALS, which is produced by the University of Virginia, is updating and is possibly going to include a RAND screener. So then that would be provided for us, free of charge. And then additionally, we are looking at progress monitoring tools for students who are already in special education, which do include a RAND screener.
Thank you so much. I know, on one hand, it's a hesitation to add yet another screener to our kindergarten teachers, because I know they feel like the whole first month is just, you know, PALS and FNP and math screeners, and they want time to build community with their students. But I also know it's so crucial to identify students who need extra reading supports as soon as possible, right? Before they're behind, so that we can offer them the kind of reading instruction that they need to not only keep pace but excel like any of other students. And so I am excited to hear that perhaps a PALS update, something we're already doing, could have that piece there, and that we are actively monitoring and identifying students as early as possible for what kind of reading supports they might need. So that's what I'm hearing. So...
Yes. One thing I just want to add, though, is, you know, we have to also think about where students should be developmentally and reading. And COVID's had a tremendous impact on that. And so we wouldn't necessarily, even on a PALS screener, immediately say, hey, you might need a child find. We're really going to start with intervention first to see if we can do some targeted short-term interventions for our students before we really get to the point where we do think it is disability-related, as opposed to something that an intervention could fix on a short-term period. So I think that's why we're also interested in the PALS RAND test, because it's going to apply to all students. And so that's just something I'll toss out there, that at the first sign a student might be struggling with reading, even as early as kindergarten with letter sound patterns and things like that, we wouldn't want to necessarily immediately suspect a disability without trying to do some targeted interventions first.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a great point. And, but bringing forward the fact that students as early as possible are getting intervention.
Absolutely.
Really important. So thank you. Thank you for that. The 15 students in the Hungry Creek program, are they students who are geographically around Hungry Creek, or are they pulled from all over?
So we, we looked at reading data from across the division. And so what we did is we identified a group of students. We don't have 15 yet. I think, Rebecca, we have six commitments right now.
I think we have six confirmed.
But we're in the process of holding IEP meetings. So we, so they're coming from all over the division for students who need that specialized reading and programming. And so IEP teams are meeting, parents are considering the change of placement for their students, and then we're working with transportation to make sure they've got transportation all set up.
Thank you so much. And then in respect to VREC, I just want to repeat something that Reverend Cooper said, and you said, I think, first of all, to say that we're going to see what the need is. When Ms. Agburn asked about pre-K, I think that's so indicative of what we're doing across the division. But at VREC particularly, we're looking at what the need is. We're not driving, here's what we want, let the people who fit come. We're looking at the need, and I think that's so important and so responsive. And then for Reverend Cooper to say, you know, it's a world-class facility. It's a world-class facility housed in the Fairfield district but serving all of our students in Henrico. It's a really exciting time. So that is all for me. Thank you for all your clarifications. I think there's a lot of things today in your talking points on how you just, you spoke to it with a lot of clarity, which was really helpful. Not only did I learn a lot to get things, you know, like the PBIS and Bliss pieces about being a tier-one versus, you know, an additional tier. I think that somehow just clicked for me and provided a lot of clarity. So I appreciate all three of you for your work today.
Thank you.
Thanks again to our presenters and to our board members for such excellent questions. All right, the next item is a first look at our student code of conduct and some proposed revisions. As you know, each year, we take a look at the code, we look at any potential revisions and bring it forward to the board for your consideration and any input as we begin that revision process. So this is a first look at some initial revisions. It'll come to you again at the next meeting in May for another opportunity for some input as we propose revisions, and then again at our June meeting for your final approval. So this is just a first look again at some proposed revisions. And Dr. Will Noel is going to present those to you and offer you an opportunity to share any thoughts or considerations related to what we've considered for some first changes and anything you may want us to consider as we move forward. Dr. Noel?
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell. As you know, I've shared with you in the board docs, the proposed changes to the 2022-2023 Code of Student Conduct. This year's changes are few and are related to the following topics: dress code, technology, and the internet, and transportation, but specifically the door-to-door reference. As with every year, we are, we listen to the voices of our students, staff, and parents as we prepare to make changes to the code. As you know, as Dr. Cashwell said, I will be before you again in June for your final approval on the proposed changes that are included in board docs. With that, I will take any questions that you might have about anything that you may have seen already in the board docs. If not, again, I will answer any questions that you have.
And I would add anything that we've not addressed that you'd want us to consider for potential revisions.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Noel. I'll start on this side. Ms. Atkins?
I'm looking forward to the opportunity to dig in a little deeper with some of the changes that I've seen. And so my response is very limited because I want to spend more time in this space. And we'll come back and share my thoughts a little bit more. However, I would want clarification on the definition of sleepwear. I would want a better understanding of how each individual across Henrico County will identify what sleepwear is, because it's important, body shaming is real. And what may look like sleepwear to one may not really be sleepwear to that parent or that student. And so in the next meeting, I'd love to learn how we're going to guide our administrative team to understand the differences between sleepwear and what one may consider normal school attire. So that's one piece of feedback I'd like to offer. The other piece is very similar tone where I see revealing sleepwear. So I'll say body shaming is real. So depending upon your shape and size, this could be a very sticky topic when we say revealing. So I'd want a better understanding of what we would, how would we define that, and how do we help our administrators implement that? Because we certainly want to be consistent with discipline across the district. You can't have one school deeming something as revealing, and you go to another area and they do not.
Right.
Body shaming is what I would call that. So I would want a better understanding of those two terms. So that's my thoughts at this moment, but I'll come back later and probably share more. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to note and appreciate that feedback that, you know, we're still at the leadership team level and working with our administrators to look at proposed changes. And you bring up a topic that's been heavily discussed and making sure that any changes we make, we're, you know, creating clear expectations and opportunities for consistency. And that's one I know we continue to be, we're going to need to wrestle with a little bit before we bring back some changes to you again at our next meeting for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Noel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Agburn?
I completely agree. That, I've had the same question about sleepwear, like how to define it. It's, you know, it's a very broad term. And, but, and the reason I say that is because I had the opportunity recently to have a Zoom meeting with some Pocahontas Middle students who were doing a project for one of their classes. And it's a great conversation, and it was all about the dress code. And I really appreciated their feedback that they gave me and was actually really kind of disheartened to learn how stressed they were about the dress code. And they talked to me about how they think about this on a daily basis and wondering what, you know, if what they have on is going to meet the criteria of the dress code. And so I asked them point blank, is it that unclear to you? And they said, yes. That in their, and it mainly is the length of a top when you're wearing it with shorts, and it's that thumb, you know, the tip of your thumb rule that's in there, and those kinds of things. And the sleepwear thing too came up. But, so what I'm hoping is that as we're doing this and as we're getting comments, because I know we're, I mean, it's my understanding, we're going to put this out for comment. I would hope that parents and students would take that opportunity to comment and let it, if it's not clear, what do we need to do to change it, to make it clear to our students and our families what's expected. I think, I mean, you know, we've worked on the code of conduct and specifically the dress code a lot. And I was surprised to hear that the students felt it was so unclear and causing them stress, which is certainly not what any of us intend. So, so as you go forward with this and solicit, you know, comments and questions, I'm just hoping that we can really with fresh eyes look at the wording of the dress code and make sure that we are, as Ms. Atkins brought up, consistently enforcing it across the county. That's, I think, my two biggest concerns with the dress code, is that the kids know what's expected of them. And for, for me to have two kids just, you know, do a project like this and tell me they don't know what's expected, tells me that we, there's a break in the message somewhere. And if we need to improve our training of our staff, then that's what we need to do. Or if we need to change the wording to make it clearer. I just was really appreciative of the feedback that these students gave me. It was a little insight that I didn't have before. So anyway, I just think we need to look at it and be sure we're clear.
A little background to that, the sleepwear piece, it was really around pajama pants.
Right.
Was the issue. During the COVID year, our students were comfortable coming to school online with pajama pants on. Now that we're back in school, that's transitioned back in our schools. So that's why we were going to look at adding that revealing piece to it, so to make sure it's not see-through, it's regular pants.
Right.
Just like revealing would be to any other article of clothing that our students would wear. In March, I met with the superintendent student advisory council.
Awesome.
And talked to the students about, you know, how do you guys feel about this? And they were like, well, we don't think that wearing pajama pants are bad. They're covering up everything. And I said, and proposed to them, I said, well, what if, we say revealing sleepwear, so you're not showing, you know, excessive skin, just like it would be with any other article of clothing. And the students on there, they were accepting of the word revealing. That's why I was going to propose it to the board.
Okay.
And just get your, your take on it.
I think, we know we've got some adjusting there, but I think to Dr. Noel's point, we did engage students in the superintendent advisory and hear them really about things like the pajama pants and, you know, that that's kind of an acceptable article of clothing. And so how would they propose us begin adjusting this dress code to better reflect their needs and what their concerns are? As you said, we made some significant changes last year to remove a lot of the bias within the dress code, specifically around some religious bias, gender bias, and there were some cultural references there that we removed. I think we came a long way, but we're still trying to really fine-tune it. And, you know, it's not always as easy as it seems. But I applaud Dr. Noel for getting the students engaged in that conversation. As you said, that's really helps to know what the disconnect is in the language we use, what, you know, how's this actually playing out in our schools? So this is great feedback and discussion as we continue to tackle that. And we'll look forward to continuing to fine-tune that and bring another draft for your consideration at our next meeting. All righty. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. Reverend Cooper?
Well, you know, you talk about alignment. I think that the manifestation of conversations, they vary depending upon our constituents. Because I'm just going to piggyback on what Ms. Atkins and my colleague Ms. Ogborne said, because those were my two biggest issues. Just want to give you this, Dr. Noel. I was recently having a conversation with a few parents and students. And one of the topics they brought up again was the dress code and how it is not being equally applied to our students in middle and high school, especially amongst African-American female students. The conversation I had that both males and females have shared that some of our African-American female students get caught out more for wearing a certain clothing item while other female students wearing the same thing go unnoticed or unaddressed. So as we talk about this, the revealing, as we talk about the sleepwear, specifically revealing, we have to be mindful of how unconscious bias may impact decisions and how that policy is applied. So we need to be as specific as possible in using those terms. And I just wanted to take a moment for us to ensure that we're on the same page as far as figuring out a way to kind of continue to address the unconscious bias and applying these policies equitable.
And I will add, if you don't mind, Reverend Cooper, one of the things the students at Pocahontas talked to me about was the differences in the way the dress code is enforced with girls and boys. And they feel like that the, by the nature of the dress code, that there is more discussion about what girls wear than boys. And we had a long discussion about this, but I think you're right. The language that's in the dress code is very important. And so we need to make it crystal clear. But we also need to be sure that there is no bias in there and that we've gone a long way, like Dr. Cashwell said. And I talked to the students about that. But they would like us, like to see us do more. And I think we can. I'm really glad that you've met with students, Will. I think that's so important. And maybe as we're messaging to our families over the next few weeks about this, that we really invite discussion about how we could do this better.
Well, I mean, again, I just think that we all are in agreement in wanting to ensure that the code, dress code policy is equitably applied and enforced.
Right, absolutely.
Anything else? Okay, Ms. Consella?
I would like to thank Dr. Noel for pointing out that the students, we, I sit on the Superintendent Student Advisory Committee, and the students had a very robust conversation regarding the dress code. And, you know, for some, I think it's important to point out for the students, they were saying that for some of our students, this may be how they're most comfortable and perhaps some of the only articles of clothing they have. Whereas in some other schools, it's a fashion statement. It was a very robust conversation amongst the students from across Henrico schools, just for context. And I too would like, I would like for the students to be engaged again before we, before this comes back to the board. And then I'd just like to thank, extend thanks because the transportation feedback was received and is actually up for a proposal for consideration from the Brooklyn District. So thank you for demonstrating, I mean, I know, you know, that we listen to constituent feedback, whether it's parents, guardians, community members, or students, or staff, that I would just like to highlight. These changes are in, were received directly from either students, staff, or community. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. So a couple of comments on actually each of these topics. First of all, I certainly support the change in the language for the transportation piece. I think that the door-to-door, for me, has always seemed a little bit confusing in terms of liabilities and all of that. And so I appreciate that update. I do have a question around the technology piece. Can you provide just like a little bit of context as to why the, or other electronic device was removed?
That section was removed because we don't have the right or authority to collect a student's personal device and inspect the contents therein without warning of the students. Like just, and there was an investigation going on. And if the student agrees to allow us to look at their phone for evidence of something that's going on against the Code of Student Conduct, they're allowed to do it, but we can't just take it from them and inspect that device, the personal device. That's why I was proposing it's going to be an HCPS-provided device.
Thank you for that context on that update.
Mrs. Shea, if I may, it's a, it's a pretty nuanced issue that I think even if it's not addressed explicitly in the Code of Conduct at this point, in this particular line of technology and access to devices upon need and when there's notice and a number of other, there are times when a device may be able to be, you know, inspected, but it doesn't need to be in this part in particular.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Watkins, our legal counsel, for providing some context there. That's certainly helpful. And then the dress code, always the hot topic. And I know part of this came out of actually some student and parent feedback that we got about the current popularity of flannel pants and how the, there was some confusion there in the dress code. So I believe that's kind of where this sleepwear piece began to propagate. And so anyway, it's an interesting point that Ms. Ogborne brings up about students having a lack of clarity about, because we try to make it very clear. And that's something we want in our Code of Conduct, is to be as clear as possible. So I appreciate you bringing that forward. The dress code was the topic of quite a few Project Maverick projects, which is Freeman High School has every senior identify a problem in their, or a challenge in their schools or their local government community. And then they work to find solutions and write proposals. And so there's quite a few dress code topics. I'm happy to share those kind of proposals with my colleagues, as well as Dr. Noel, which would be kind of direct student voice on some of those issues. And then when I was attending Project Maverick and getting to engage in discussion with students and staff, I thought it was very interesting to the, to the point that Reverend Cooper and Ms. Ogborne made. Quite a few staff shared with me how uncomfortable they often feel enforcing the dress code. And so I think a robustest conversation around this, both from the student perspective, but also having staff voice in as to the enforcement of the dress code is important. And so I know that's quite a bit of conversation and quite a bit of lift, but I think it's important around this conversation.
Yeah. Ms. Shea, may I just make one point? I also just wanted to share, Dr. Noel, some of the terms that I've heard. The one that always pops up is dress-coded. And so I think if we are able to use, first, better understand when our children use dress-coded and then make sure that when, as adults, if we use that term, that it means the same thing. I just want to give that to you because that word is one of the most trendiest words that I hear. And I don't know if you guys hear it in your conversations, but if we're using, thinking about the language that we use, that word, dress-coded, I think if we could understand and really capture the definition from students and what they believe that word means, and then talk to a few adults, get their understanding and definition of what that word means from their lens, and maybe compare the two to better understand how we explain dress-coding. I just wanted to offer that for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anything else, colleagues? Well, we appreciate you hearing all of our thoughts around all of these issues. And I look forward to sharing the Project Maverick proposals and our continued discussion.
Yeah, appreciate Dr. Noel's continued efforts on this. I know it's a challenging lift. He's done a great job engaging stakeholder feedback from administrators, students, and so on. We'll certainly take all of the points you all have brought forward this afternoon into consideration and work to do some more refining and perhaps engage some student focus groups and some teachers or staff members, I'd say, as well. So thank you, Dr. Noel.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is a look at, and ultimately seeking your approval, of the education fee and tuition schedules for 2022-2023. You know, this list has continued to shrink a bit over the years. And we've also wanted to make sure we've captured all elements for which there is tuition, some of which hadn't previously been reflected on this list to make sure it's the most up-to-date and accurate. So Mr. Wack is here to answer any questions you may have about it. You've had an opportunity to review the draft, or rather, the proposed with the red line revisions before I seek your approval here.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. And if I don't mind, I'll just sum up a note. I think one of the biggest items of note is the waiving of out-of-county tuition for full-time and permanent part-time HCPS employees. So I just wanted to make sure, since we're not going item by item, that that got explicitly spoken. So Reverend Cooper, any thoughts or comments? Ms. Ogborne?
No, just that notice that we got the variance policy updated and the fee schedule on the same day. That's awesome. I do think one thing the Policy Committee has discussed is bringing the fee schedule forward earlier in the school year. Hopefully, next year, we will be bringing that earlier so we can discuss that fee for our teachers, bringing students from out of the county, but also for planning for middle school and high school courses, that it would help families make those choices earlier if this were approved earlier. So I'll just put a plug in. I know that's the plan, but I think just for everybody's knowledge, that's, the Policy Committee was all in favor of that. But that's my own comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. Ms. Atkins? Ms. Consella? All right. I already made my comment about it. So are we, we're approving this today? Is that true?
That is, I'm seeking your approval, so the next part's up to you.
All right, board members, we have heard the recommendation. Is there a motion?
I move that the school board approve the 2022-2023 fee and tuition schedules for students as presented.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ogborne. Roll call, vote Reverend Cooper.
Aye.
Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it, the fee and tuition schedules are approved as presented.
Thank you. For the next item, I am recommending that the school board approve the right-of-way agreement between Virginia Electric and Power Company, Dominion Virginia Energy, and the County School Board of Henrico County, Virginia, at Tuckahoe Elementary School.
Thank you, Ms., Dr. Cashwell. Is there a motion? I can't make the motion because any of you.
I move that we accept the recommendation from the superintendent and approve the right-of-way agreement as presented.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Atkins. Roll call, vote Reverend Cooper.
Aye.
Ms. Consella?
Aye.
Ms. Ogborne?
Aye.
Ms. Atkins?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it, the right-of-way agreement is approved. All right, then.
That concludes items from the superintendent.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public forum. Citizens had until 4:30 PM on Wednesday, May 11 to submit comments for the board's review. Using the link on the HCPS website, citizens took advantage of that opportunity, and we sincerely appreciate their input. The three submitted comments were compiled and provided to us prior to the start of today's meeting. And those comments have also been posted to Board Docs. The next item on the agenda is old or unfinished business. Colleagues, do you have any old or unfinished business? I have, I do, I do have an item of old business. So with lots of talk about the budget in the headlines, as well as with our neighboring divisions unable to finalize their budgets and hire for key positions, I just want to take a moment and thank my colleagues, as well as our colleagues, our counterparts on the general government side, for all of our collaboration on being able to unanimously pass the budget last month. As you might know, this is ahead of our typical timeline, and we did that so that we could get things in place, adding so many key additional positions and get the positions listed so that we can poise HR to be ahead of the curve on this hiring season. And we heard from Dr. Smith earlier about just this week being able to list those full-time instructional aid positions, which I think is so important. So Dr. Cashwell, in light of that, could you provide us any update on where we stand with these measures taken by both boards?
Sure, absolutely. I mean, I think as you articulated, this budget cycle has certainly highlighted this board's commitment to being very strategic and deliberate in taking steps to position HCPS as a compensation leader and a sought-after division where members want to work and flourish, and that our team has the supports needed to serve students well. And as you alluded to, we heard a lot about some of those new added supports, particularly in the arena of special education. And we are grateful to our partners and county government for an accelerated budget timeline, particularly given this really unique landscape for hiring, right? We have a national teacher shortage, a strained labor market. So adopting a robust budget that includes new key supports and increased compensation for employees when you did means that we have already begun to post vacancies and began the recruiting and hiring process for next school year, which is tremendous. And I know we've previously shared some highlights of that budget that you all adopted, but I want to repeat some of them again because they're worth repeating, right? So, you know, this adopted budget adds a significant number of new positions, you know, from reading specialists to counselors to school psychologists and social workers, new additional English language learning teachers, new bus assistants, a number of new full-time IAs, particularly shifting from part-time to full-time in the exceptional education arena. And it also includes a 5.06% compensation increase for our employees. And, you know, even with what really are staggering healthcare costs, we, Henrico County Schools, absorb the cost of that increase for our employees. So that raise is a raise that is not going to individual increases in individual healthcare premiums. We also included a $3.1 million investment in teachers. That's the addition of our career ladder program. And we are very excited to share details, more details, about that ladder later this month. But in short, it definitely compensates employees who have earned their doctoral degrees and other micro credentials and specializations that will be available through the career ladder program. We also not planned, got to hear some highlights, particularly of how that relates to some of the professional development in the special education arena. And beyond the adopted budget, which of course includes a robust compensation plan, to your point, we have launched that hiring process since the adoption of that budget for next school year. And as we've done that, the team has continued to think about beyond the budget that was adopted, what other efforts can we put forward to reward and retain our loyal employees? And so we did make some new announcements this week about some additional efforts. And so while a small token of appreciation, we wanted to be able to say thank you to employees for continuing to choose Henrico as an employer. And so we'll be providing a $500 bonus for full-time staff across all employee groups, it's not just our teacher-employee group, returning to HCPS in the fall. Do we wish that amount was higher? Of course we do. You know, however, given in limited funding, we determined that a modest bonus to say thank you for continuing to choose HCPS as your employer on top of the 5.06% raise was better than none. So certainly pleased to be able to add that small thank you for those who, you know, we know employees have a choice of where they work. And so if they continue to, if they choose to stay with Henrico, we want to make sure we say thank you for doing that. And of course, with wellness a continued priority of this board and administration, we will be taking action to add two new wellness days to the 22-23 calendar. And you'll recall, we made adjustments to this year's current calendar to provide additional wellness days for staff and students, two of which are on the horizon, coming in May and June. So in tandem with those actions to reward and retain our current employees, we are in recruitment season, thanks to that expedited budget that was adopted. And having those new support positions and vacancies posted early in the hiring season is a great first step. But as I said, as a team, we've continued to think about I said, as a team, we've continued, continued to think about what additional steps can we take to retain, or rather, recruit and expand our workforce to fill vacancies, particularly in hard-to-staff areas. And that's why you saw the addition of that $500 referral bonus opportunity for our employees who assist us in bringing on new hires, particularly in those hard-to-staff areas. So offering a competitive salary is critical to attracting new employees, and we've ensured that our starting pay is competitive with the region. Does that mean that a new teacher will make more than a current teacher? No, it does not. Our pay, pay scale doesn't directly correlate with education years of service. So even with the increase to starting pay, new teachers are making less than veteran HCPS teachers because new teachers are not eligible for the 5.06% raise, which, by the way, is paid through both a step increase and a wage increase. So there's a compounding effect of that step increase with the wage increase. And of course, the new employees aren't eligible for the $500 retention bonus in the fall. So all this to say, I am so proud that Henrico continues to lead the region in teacher pay. Last fiscal year, even with minimal increases in the state education budget, and there was financial uncertainty still amidst the pandemic, the county leadership, our School Board, our Board of Supervisors, worked to produce a budget that provided a 6.9% teacher pay increase, along with longevity increases for this current school year for employees with more than 10 years of service to Henrico. And so when you couple that with this year's 5.06% increase, the commitment to investing in our employees by this Board is evident. So employee compensation, supports, and health and wellness have never been a higher priority for me and/or for this Board. And so we truly understand the many challenges our Henrico School employees have heroically risen to over the past two years, and we remain grateful for the work that they do in service of our students and our community each day. So, thank you.
Dr. Cashwell, thank you for that update and providing clarity. I think a lot of things you brought forth were, were helpful clarity, as in what we shared this week doesn't undo anything that we did in our budget last month because that was finalized, as well as the importance of reinvesting in our team when we have unexpected surplus.
Yeah, and to your point, being able to act early in the budget season with such a unique landscape with the labor market. So we're grateful again for, for the ability to have been able to do that.
Thank you so much. Any new business or announcements?
Mrs. Shea, Chairwoman Shea, I do have a few announcements. And before I dive into those announcements, I want to thank my colleagues for giving me the opportunity to present them on today. And for a warning, it may take about 10, 15 minutes. So wanted just to, to share that with each of you. So let's go ahead and dig on in. You can advance to the next slide. I want to say congratulations to our very own Elko Middle School Eagles. Last month, students from Elko Middle School placed second in the TSA Chapter Team State Conference in Hampton, Virginia. One of the reasons why it was important for me to share this is because it's been, I want to say, almost a decade before, since Elko has had a team. And for them to attend this conference and come in second is magnificent. And so wanted to highlight them. And for those that aren't familiar, the Technology Student Association, or TSA, is a national organization of students engaged in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math beyond the classroom. And it really does give our students the opportunity to participate in challenges and competitions. The students that participated are pictured on your screen. From left to right, we have Melody Holmes, Maurice Nicholson, Amarel Lucas, Delaney Grove, and Michael Carter. Janay Robinson Hopkins also participated, however, she is not in the photo. Also, a very special shout out to the individuals on the sides of their picture. Ms. Walker, she serves as, as an advisor for the team. And Principal Dr. Mizell, who also traveled to Hampton, Virginia, to see his students participate in the competition. And so I will ask that if you could just join me in a round of applause for this wonderful, wonderful opportunity our students had. All right, advancing on to Slide 3, I'm going to share some updates on the councils, committees, and boards that I serve on. I know it's been a while since I have done this, and I know there are several that have asked for me to do this again. Myself and my colleagues all serve on different committees, boards, and councils. And so this is just one way that I'm going to share some of the progress and some of the work that, that I participate on. And as always, I think about a quote, and one of the quotes that I will lead my updates with is by Katzenbach and Smith, which shared overcoming barriers to performance is how isolated groups become dedicated teams. And I believe this to be true, and very grateful for the teamwork on each of these committees, boards, and councils. So I'll ask you to come in closer. It's not a text-heavy presentation. Most of what you're going to learn and hear is going to be verbal. So come in closer and pay attention, and we'll advise on to the next slide. Starting with CFC, which is the Community Food Collaborative Board, notably the Cornerstone Farm at Fairfield Middle School, the division has invested in a full-time community agriculturalist position. Ms. Natalie Green has been hired and recently been a science teacher at Fairfield Middle Schools, Middle School. She also operates a farm over in eastern Henrico, and she's just a wonderful, fantastic fit for this particular position. Also, the Farm Club and Farm-to-Table Cooking classes are definitely going to be the flagship for this enrichment program. And particularly with these particular opportunities, the Farm Club and the Farm-to-Table Cooking Class, we have about anywhere from 10 to 16 students participating in that. Also, CFC will be hosting workshops at the Cornerstone Farm for anyone in the community interested in gardening or growing food. We have constant conversations about making sure that our children understand that food doesn't come from the grocery store. It is grown. And so in our meetings, we continue to have discussion about that. And then also, I'll share that on May 14th, from 10 a.m. to 1, Fairfield Middle School is hosting a All About Me event. And the CFC has worked very hard, and that Cornerstone Farm is a big significant piece of that event. And I also want to applaud my colleague, Reverend Cooper, for some of the wonderful work he's done over at Fairfield Middle School that allows us at the CFC to be able to continue to do things like this and making sure that our students understand where our food comes from, and all the pieces that surround it that impact not just us in Henrico County, but beyond. So moving on to HCM, yes, yes, and yes, I'm very excited to announce our 2022 Henrico Christmas Mother. If you didn't know, now you do. Ms. Maria Bagley, Ms. Bagley's lifelong commitment to community service is rooted in her desire to give back to the community, which supported her family when they arrived in the United States from Cuba somewhere around 1960, 1962, when Maria was just six months old. Maria is well-known in the Verina District, and she is our first, I said first, Spanish-speaking Henrico Christmas Mother. And I think that also deserves a round of applause, if you, if you're willing to do so. Next up is HPAL, which stands for the Henrico Police Athletic League. We currently have around 500 youth registered with HPAL. We are identifying the most vulnerable youth in Henrico County to place in some of our programs, which, which really are our summer camp in our after-school program. Also, HPAL is negotiating the particulars with the county on acquiring the Math and Science Center to serve for the future home of Henrico Pal. And so there's more to come there. There's more negotiation happening there. And last but not least, mark your calendar for HPAL Golf Tournament, which is happening on June 6th at the Dominion Club. Next is the YMCA Strategic Alignment Committee. I will refer to it as the Y as I continue to share updates on our work. In this space, there certainly, the Y has always been committed to building strong kids and families and communities. And wellness is a priority in our discussions. And so in March, we hosted a very successful virtual mental health forum and had engaging discussions with experts and the community. And while it's hard to believe, we are in May, we are. And so for the Y, we are focusing on Foster Care Month, and will continue to share information. And particularly, if you are in the Verina District, you can go to the Y located in Sanston. One of the projects that we are discussing right now is how to create a community closet for all to use with the Y. And so more to come as we continue to work through that particular project. As we advance to Slide 5, I'm going to talk about the School Board and Superintendent Assignments and how I help serve on these teams in these particular spaces. Many are familiar with our Health Committee, and so I will not spend time in that space. I value your time, Dr. Tygen and Ms. Gilbert. Provide consistent communications, and so I do serve on there, but just wouldn't be wise to spend time in there since y'all do a wonderful job. And when I say y'all, I'm referring to Dr. Tygen, Ms. Gilbert, and the wonderful people that continue to serve on the Health Committee. Moving on to SHAB, our School Health Advisory Board. In February, SHAB provided a presentation to the Board to seek approval for a slate of officers for 2122, and as well, they outlined priorities for the committee. Since then, we have met and worked on goals and preferences to ensure solid communication and workflow. The next meeting is May 18th at 6 p.m. at HCPS Central Office located on Nine Mile Road. And this meeting is open to the public. All are welcome. All are welcome. Next up is HEVPAK, our Henrico Federal Programs Advisory Committee. It's been a fantastic year in this space. A very special shout out to Dr. Cassandra Willis and Ms. Deborah Ringold of FACE for some outstanding leadership and facilitation of these meetings. They've been very engaging conversations with families in this space. I'll give you a few updates here. So applications for Title 1, 2, and 4 were finalized with the help of community and staff members. Families heard from family engagement on subcommittees regarding needs and were able to provide input. CTE provided information on the A Centers, and students offered their thoughts on college-level courses. One of the things that is most impressive in this space is we invite students in to share their thoughts and give their input, and it's been very successful so far. Also, families participated in discussions on preschool and summer academy. And there's more. HEVPAK is gearing up to distribute well over 40,000 books next month to students so that they will have home libraries. And some of those books will also be sent to counselors, and we're going to incorporate books written by local authors and have opportunities for book signings. And so this is work that we're doing in this committee to continue advancing our students in reading and other areas. So we're going to keep it on moving with our Instructional Materials Review Committee. Brief update, we received three requests. We reviewed two. One was withdrawn. The next, I think as of May 9th, so let me just be clear, that was as of May 9th. And so right now, we don't have any active reviews or challenges. Last up, the last team I serve on is SEAC, the Special Education Advisory Committee. What a wonderful experience this has been for me. It's been purposeful. It's been emotional and productive. So SEAC members and staff from the HCPS Exceptional Education Department had a successful SEAC information event on April 26th. It was over at Tucker High School. And yes, it was the day we had the hailstorm. And we sat and said, if only two people showed up, we're going to continue. But that was not the case. We had folks come in and 100% engagement, from the podium to the folks in the seat, to the back of the room. And it was really inspiring and positive. And in addition to the conversations, in addition to the presentations, folks participated in an activity around hopes and wishes. They were able to share, if they had all the money in the world and they could wish upon a star, what would they do in special education? It was a moment. And we were able to memorialize, and they wrote these things down so that as a SEAC, we could continue to use this data that we've received to help shape the future of the committee. It was a wonderful, inspiring, emotional, productive moment. So SEAC will hold its next formal meeting on May 31st at 6 p.m. at Tucker High School. All are welcome. And I will close with a short video that was made during that special education information event. What is SEAC? First off, it's an acronym, and it stands for Special Education Advisory Committee. School divisions in Virginia are required to have a Special Education Advisory Committee. That's one reason why we have it. But communities, families, students, and school systems desire it as well. It's an opportunity to partner with your school system, an opportunity to learn more about special education.
Parents are able to share their individualized experiences, but also collectively come together and help identify the priorities for the school division, for my team, the School Board, to come together and help us say, what do the students with disabilities in totality or in large in Henrico County need from us as special educators? What do our teachers need? What do our students need? What do our families need? So that they feel connected and engaged in their child's educational experiences while in Henrico County.
So whether we're talking about IEPs, 504s, accessible equipment, there's a list of things. The only question is, what's on that list that means something to you? If you're wondering whether you have the time, that's a good question. But I will tell you, the folks that volunteer for SEAC don't necessarily have time, but all day long, they have the heart. And they know what their talents are because all are welcome. And so that was captured while we were at the event. And, you know, it was so moving to hear the stories of families that were transitioning or that have been navigating this thing called special education and what it means. And we all in some way or form shared how we were a part of a bigger family. None of us looked alike, sounded alike, experiences were not alike, but yet we were all one family at that time. And so this is my plea for everyone. If you would like to learn more about the Special Education Advisory Committee, I ask you to join us. Join us on May 31st and learn more. Madam Shea, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Ms. Atkins, anything from my colleagues? Anything else? All right. In that case, the School Board's next meeting and work session will be scheduled on Thursday, May 26, 2022, at 1 p.m. and a monthly meeting at 6:30 p.m. The meeting times may be adjusted if needed. This meeting is adjourned.